Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk or the deputy, the assistant deputy, deputy, deputy city?
Temporary clerk.
Mayor, manager, clerk. Please call, please call the role of the members, the members here.
Certainly, mayor.
Thank you.
Counselor Holtine?
Present.
Counselor Dozeman?
Here.
Counselor Ohm?
Here.
Counselor Stites?
Here.
Counselor Hoppe?
Present.
Counselor Weaver?
Here.
Counselor Nosler Beck? Counselor Hutchinson?
Here.
Mayor, I believe you have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, in your packet tonight, we have city council meeting minutes of August the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and city council meeting minutes for September the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and study session notes for September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any corrections to be noted? Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, mayor. For the minutes for August twenty-eighth, at the end of this session, I thanked local works for their successful TLC dumpsters. Actually, it wasn't the wine walk. Close, but no cigar.
Okay. We will ask the clerk's office to make those corrections before we approve them. Are there any other corrections to be noted? So we will let those stand as presented and as corrected. Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we will have the agenda stand as presented. We have several proclamations tonight. I'll go to the podium. I am pleased to have a proclamation to recognize Dr. Michelle Haney, and if she would please join me at the podium. How are you? Come on, right, you've got to stand right up here next to me, but don't.
Can I hug you?
Make sure, well, just, just behind the podium.
Okay, got it.
Whereas, Dr. Michelle Haney serves as president of Red Rocks Community College, one of Colorado Community College System's largest colleges, serving ten thousand students across its two campuses in Lakewood and Arvada. And whereas, Dr. Haney earned a PhD in counseling from the University of Wyoming, a master's degree from Chapman College, and a bachelor of arts in political science from the University of New Mexico. And whereas, in her thirty-one-year career and fifteen-year tenure as college president, she has rolled out cutting-edge academic programs, brought in wraparound support services for students, and forged deep relationships with Colorado business and industry. Dr. Haney has set a high bar for educational leaders throughout Colorado. And whereas, Dr. Haney has received the Shirley B. Gordon, Gordon, excuse me, award from Phi Theta Kappa Women in Business Award from the University, from the Denver Business Journal, was named leader among leaders and woman of the year by the American Association of Women in Community Colleges, and the city of Westminster was voted president of the year, outstanding board member of the year, and woman of the year for Jefferson County, as well as authoring three books published in seven languages. And whereas, Dr. Michelle Haney will be retiring after thirty-one years of faithful service to college education in January of two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas, her service with the Colorado Community College System and Red Rocks Community College has benefited the citizens of Wheat Ridge, our city council, and the office of mayor. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado formally designate September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three as Dr. Michelle Haney, with our thanks and gratitude for her service through the citizens of Colorado, dated this twenty-fifth day of September, two thousand and twenty-three. Dr. Haney, thank you for what you have done. Thank you for being with us. I'm going to bring this. You going to say a few words?
You can tell I could probably say a few more. Thank you very, very much. I feel very humbled, quite honestly, to be in front of you all and to receive this proclamation. And I've never had a Michelle Haney day, so thank you very, very much. And I will miss all of you, and as I've told the mayor, I'd like to come back. So thank you very much, and thanks, Patrick, too.
Thank you, Dr. Haney. Don't, don't go away. I've got, let's see, I've got to, got to give you that. We've got, we've got something right here.
Oh, my goodness. I won't be able to carry it. No.
We'll, we'll find some.
Thanks.
We'll sign some bearers. So, and I also want, our city council really likes to get in on the photo ops, so council, would you please stand up? We're going to go over in the middle here and get some photos. I'd like to invite Dr. Jeff Free Osley from Lutheran Medical Center to join me up here. How are you tonight? Good. Thank you for bringing here. I am pleased to read a proclamation in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas, October two thousand and twenty-three marks thirty-eight years of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, has educated women about early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas, one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer within their lifetimes. And whereas, when breast cancer is detected early and is in localized stage, the five-year survival rate for women is ninety-nine percent. And whereas, the awareness campaign is remembering those who have lost the fight against breast cancer, standing with those who remember their loved ones, and continuing to support our nation's advocates. And whereas, the American Cancer Society has searched endlessly for a cure through vital research, and has the mammoth task of educating our community and all Americans on the risk of breast cancer. And whereas, the Lutheran Breast Cancer Care Center at Lutheran Medical Center in Wheat Ridge provides award-winning services for women across the state. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, and the Wheat Ridge City Council do hereby proclaim October two thousand and twenty-three as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Wheat Ridge, and encourage residents of Wheat Ridge to celebrate the success and memorialize lost battles, dated this twenty-fifth day of September, two thousand and twenty-three. This is for you. And would you say a few words, please?
At our, at the Lutheran Medical Center Breast Cancer Center, we know it's a very comprehensive approach to how we treat our patients. We have nurse navigators to help make appointments, set up biopsies. We have both diagnostic and screening mammograms. We have nutritionist, dietitian on staff, a genetic counselor, physical therapy, lymphedema. It's very comprehensive in how we approach our patients. Last year, we performed about nine thousand mammograms, over five hundred biopsies, over two hundred patients diagnosed with breast cancer. And so obviously, it's trying to meet a need in our community. And we will, with the new hospital opening up, be on campus at that new hospital, and hopefully in the fall of next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Oh, this is for you. Okay. Okay, we have a proclamation about Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I'd like to ask Candace Coolidge, the executive director for Porchlight Family Services, to join me at the podium. And I'd like to invite Counselor Hoppe to come. Counselor Hoppe is on the board of directors for Porchlight. And thank you very much for coming. She's done a wonderful job over the years. You've been at this for a long time and really done great work. Whereas domestic violence impacts countless Coloradans without regard to age, race, religion, or economic status, as victims suffer at the hands of a spouse or partner, it affects their children, families, and entire communities. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge is committed to the reduction of domestic violence and the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. And whereas, the Wheat Ridge Police Department is committed to providing assistance to victims and witnesses of crime and other traumatic events through victims' assistance partnerships and awareness-related efforts and events. And whereas, Wheat Ridge supports and partners with the Porchlight Family Justice Center, which provides comprehensive legal, emotional, and critical supportive services for survivors of domestic violence. And whereas, Wheat Ridge joins, Wheat Ridge joins with others across Colorado and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, and shares the worthy goals of this month-long observance in sending a loud and clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in the city of Wheat Ridge. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Wheat Ridge, I, Bud Starker, mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim October two thousand and twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Wheat Ridge, dated this twenty-third day of, twenty-fifth day of September, two thousand and twenty-three. And would you like to say a few words? Thank you.
The theme for Domestic Violence Awareness Month in two thousand and twenty-three is "Everyone Knows Someone." The theme highlights how common domestic violence is. Domestic violence is more than physical. The goal is to get people talking about domestic violence, so survivors know they're not alone and help is available. Help is available through Porchlight. Actually, our tagline is "You're Not Alone." And so through this Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October, just a reminder of Porchlight Services, that we are here to help if anyone is in a situation or has friends or family members in Wheat Ridge that are unfortunately in a situation involving domestic violence, Porchlight is, is here to help. And thank you so much to the city of Wheat Ridge for your continued support of Porchlight. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, we're going to let the photographer up in front. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your work.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for being on the board. All right. We are now, pardon me. We're not, we are now at our public's right to speak portion of our, our agenda tonight. Members of the public may come and speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. I have several people that have signed up to speak. If you haven't signed up to speak, we will let, we will call, call for folks from the, from the room, and if you are joining us online, if you will raise your hand, we are happy to bring you into the, into the meeting. We have, when you, when you come to the podium, if you would please give us your first name and your last name, if you would please spell your last name for the record and give us an address, we would appreciate that. The clerk will set the timer buttons after you've given us your name and address. Our first speaker is Dan Larson and Jerry DiTulio on deck.
Good evening. My name is Dan Larson. I live at four seven nine nine Flower Street in Wheat Ridge. Less than one month ago, I gathered signatures from a few of my neighbors to add my name to the November ballot. Today, I'm announcing I'm running for city council, representing all of the people that live in Wheat Ridge District Four. Since relocating to Wheat Ridge from Denver seven years ago, I've listened to and worked closely with my neighbors as president of the HOA in my community. I've also represented District Four on the city planning commission for the past five years. Wheat Ridge is a remarkable city and a great place to live. That's why I'm running for city council. My campaign is focused on listening to my neighbors and learning about the issues they face every day. As a member of the Wheat Ridge City Council, I would, I will work to protect our neighborhoods, foster a business climate that's beneficial to all, promote a responsible city government, and work toward a balance between the urgent need for housing and the very real impact that development can have on a neighborhood. On Dan Larson, I'm running for city council. Tune in this Wednesday, when I will discuss my campaign on the League of Women Voters' Candidate Forum, and it starts at six o'clock, and you can find it on the Wheat Ridge YouTube channel. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jerry DiTulio and Alma Carrillo on deck.
Jerry DiTulio, Jefferson County Treasurer, one hundred Jefferson County Parkway in Golden. Thank you, mayor and city council, for a quick three minutes. As you know, Jefferson County, along with the state, has been under the Tabor revenue cap for years, and for the last few years, the Board of County Commissioners has decided to refund Tabor, refund checks that exceeds the revenue cap that we have as a Jefferson County by check. The first year we did that, it was two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar-plus checks, averaged about seven dollars a check, and that was frustrating for a lot of property tax people that got their money. Two years, one year ago, we gave out the same amount of number of checks, but it was about seventy dollars that the checks averaged, and that was, so the first year was one point seven million, the second year was seventeen million. So this year is our third year, we'll be distributing the checks out, and they'll be coming from my office here around October sixteenth. It's going to really hurt, but I have to move about forty million dollars from our investment portfolio into the checking account to pay for the checks, and we'll still be sending out two hundred and thirteen thousand plus, but the average check will average about a hundred and eighty-five dollars a person. The median's about a hundred and ten dollars. That means half the people that are property owners will get more than a hundred and ten, and other half will get less than a hundred and ten, but the average is a hundred and eighty-five. So the checks will be coming out October sixteenth, and what I'm asking is that in the past, people have sent their checks back because they think that they want the county to keep it and spend it, rather than give it back, you know, spend it for the jail or spend it for human services. Because of Tabor, the county cannot keep the check and use it, so please don't send the check back, because I'll send it back to you with a nice little note from me saying, cash it, donate it, give it to somebody for a tip at a restaurant. So the checks will be out October sixteenth, and if you have any questions, you can give me a call at the office or my staff at three oh three two seven one eight three three zero. That's the treasurer's office. And I also wanted to thank Val Nosler Beck for all the work she's done on city council. I know she's not here tonight, she's dealing with some issues. I want to wish Dan Larson good luck, but thanks for all you do, and good luck to Val and to Dan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our, our next speaker is Alma Carrillo.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Alma Carrillo, last name spelled C-A-R-R-I-L-L-O, and our address is five fifty South Wadsworth Boulevard, Suite four hundred in Lakewood. I'm from Congresswoman Brittany Patterson's office. Just here for a couple announcements. As always, if you have any issues with the federal agency, you could always reach out to our office. But we are also working on recognizing Vietnam veterans who served during the Vietnam War, even if they weren't stationed in Vietnam. If you served during any time, any period during that time, or if you know of someone who did, and they weren't recognized with a lapel pin, please reach out to our office. We are working on recognizing those veterans, so we're trying to get the word out. And our office number is three oh three two seven four seven nine four four. Thank you for having me, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you very much for being here. Let's see, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. I also should have mentioned that we would, are taking comment on the, we have a special study session item, so we will take comment on that at this time, if anybody would like to, to comment on that. I don't have anybody signed up to speak on my list. If there's anyone here in the hall, you may, you may come to the podium now to speak on any of these items, and we'll see if you are joining us online. You can raise your hand in the virtual format, and we will bring you in, and I'll check with our staff running the, the interweb and see if we have anybody joining us on the web.
Mayor, we have one person who's on a phone, and I, I was just wondering if it'd be okay to remind anyone on the phone on Zoom that in order to raise your hand, you hit star nine.
Okay.
And then star six if you need to unmute and mute again.
Okay. So if you're joining us on the telephone, star nine will bring you there, and I guess star six unmutes you. So once again, we'll give it just a moment to see if we have anybody.
And we do have a hand.
Okay. We have, have a caller calling in, so if you'd please give us your name and first name, last name, spell last name, give us your address. You'll have three minutes to, to address the council.
So caller, I've allowed you to talk, oh, there you go, you've unmuted. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. This is Jenny Snell. That is S-N-E-L-L. I live at seven zero two zero West Thirty-Fifth Avenue in Wheat Ridge. I am calling in tonight, and I'm very thankful to be able to call in. I'm out of state, celebrating my mom's eighty-first birthday, so thank you so much. I am calling in to announce my city council run. I'm running for city council seat in District One, and I'm really excited to be doing this and continuing the great work that city councils already doing. I look forward to lots of more, lots more good stuff with the city. I thank you all, they're doing a wonderful job, and I look forward to working with you. This is Jenny Snell, running for District One City Council. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for calling in tonight. Is there anyone else joining us online or here in the hall that would like to speak? Now is your opportunity. Is that it? Okay. We don't have anybody else coming forward, so we'll close our public's right to speak. We'll go to agenda item number one. Counselor Holtine, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce council bill number twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at seventy-five seventy-five West Forty-fourth Avenue from commercial one C one to mixed-use commercial M U C, case number WZ twenty-three oh six. At issue, the city owns the former Bank of the West property at seventy-five seventy-five West Forty-fourth Avenue, and is proposing a zone change from commercial one C one to mixed-use commercial M U C. The zone change will result in a zoning that matches surrounding zoning and enables redevelopment of the site by expanding permitted uses.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. This is a public hearing. This hearing is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you intend to speak on this item, by speaking, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it in this matter. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Elena Levas Loera is here this evening, our planner.
Okay, Ms. Loera.
Good evening. My name is Elena Levas Loera, and I'm a planner with the city of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ twenty-three zero six, which is a request for approval of a zone change from commercial one to mixed-use commercial at seven five seventy-five West Forty-fourth Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The properties within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined in red, and a transfer of the property to Foothills was recently approved by city council on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The property is located at the intersection of West Forty-fourth Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard. The area is primarily commercial along Wadsworth and residential to the east and northeast. The property measures about point three seven three acres in size and contains a bank building built in nineteen seventy-three, which was most recently a Bank of the West. I would like to take a moment to go over a brief timeline of the properties on this block and highlight how the Bank of the West property fits in with everything that has already taken place on this block and the surrounding area. In two thousand and four, Foothills Regional Housing built their offices at Forty-Fifth and Wadsworth and have been a landowner on the block since then. In two thousand and eleven, city council legislatively rezoned most of the Wadsworth corridor between Thirty-Fifth and Forty-Fifth to mixed-use commercial. The city's practice has been to allow an opt-out period after a legislative rezoning, and in the case of Wadsworth, two properties opted out, the owners of the former Pet Boys and Bank of the West. The northern portion of the block, which includes O'Reilly Auto Parts and the Foothills Regional Housing Office, was rezoned to M U C as part of the legislative rezoning. In two thousand and two, Foothills pursued, sorry, two thousand and two, that was way off, two thousand and twenty-two, Foothills pursued site plan approval for the undeveloped portion of the land they owned between their office and the former Pet Boys building, which was approved after a nine-month review. That is the fifty-unit structure being constructed today, the first phase of the Ives. Around the same time, the Pet Boys business closed, and the property went on the market, and Foothills purchased it. Foothills requested the property be rezoned from C one to M U C, which was approved to unify the zoning on the block and to achieve their vision of a master-planned, mixed-income community. A neighborhood meeting was held in November two, two thousand and twenty-one, a planning commission hearing held November second, two thousand and twenty-two, and a city council hearing held on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. By this time, the city had acquired the Bank of the West property through the Wadsworth Right-of-Way Acquisition Process, and has been using it for storage and construction offices for the Wadsworth Improvement Project. On January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, the city council approved the Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan, which memorialized city council's commitment to improving, increasing, and preserving the city's affordable housing stock. Shortly after, Foothills approached the city requesting the Bank of the West property be sold or transferred to them to unify the block. A study session was held on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and a public hearing was held on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, approving the property transfer of the Bank of the West property to Foothills. Because the land transfer had not been approved at the time, the city, as the owner, initiated an application to rezon the property from C one to M U C to unify the zoning on the block and to allow the potential for residential development on the hard corner. A neighborhood meeting was held on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, a planning commission hearing on August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and city council hearing tonight, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a zoning map of the area. The subject property is currently zone C one. This is a zoning map of the area. The subject property is currently Zoned C1 and is outlined in red. The site is entirely surrounded by Mixed Use Commercial zoning. Surrounding land uses are currently non-residential in nature, including a propane business, the former Pet Boys building, and the office building owned by Foothills Regional Housing. Recent development projects in the area include Foothills underway Ives development to the north, and the Town Center and Town Center North Apartments to the southeast at 44th and Vance. This is a very zoomed-out version of the zoning map. I wanted to point out and emphasize how this site fits in with the larger picture. Not only is the site the last piece of this block specifically, it is also a missing piece in unifying the zoning along the entire This is a view of the subject property looking east from Wadsworth Boulevard. It is a 6,625 square foot bank building with parking. This is a view of the subject property looking north from West 44th Avenue. The city initiated the rezone of the property on behalf of Foothills Regional Housing to allow for a wider range of uses and to align the property zoning with the city's comprehensive plan, the Wadsworth Corridor Urban Renewal Area Plan, and, sorry, the Affordable Housing Strategy and with other properties on the corridor. Should the zone change be approved, Foothills intends to redevelop the site as part of a future expansion of the Ives development. The C1 Zone District allows a wide range of commercial land uses, which include office, general business, and retail sales and service establishments. By contrast, MUC zoning allows residential uses, commercial uses, or a mix of the two. The MUC designation would allow more flexibility for revitalization of the site and will provide standards for a future The MUC district is complementary to the context of the corridor and surrounding zoning and land uses, and provides a wider range of allowed uses than the existing C1 zoning. This table summarizes the current and proposed zoning's development standards. Most of the proposed zoning development standards would apply if the property redeveloped in the future. Most notable differences between the two zone districts include building height, setback requirements, and build-to requirements. The design standards in MUC are strict and include architectural standards, open space requirements, setbacks, and parking requirements. The maximum height in MUC for the specific property is taller than C1 because the property is located in the area that voters exempted in 2008 from the charter's height and density limitations. That means a single-use building can be up to four stories or 62 feet, and a building that is vertically mixed-use can be up to six stories or 90 feet. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on July 26th, 2023, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. Three people attended the meeting and did not have any concerns with the rezone proposal. Because Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Before the hearing, staff posted two signs on the property, and 306 letters were sent to property owners and occupants within a 600-foot radius of the subject property. Notification of this hearing was also published in the newspaper and on the city's website. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request on August 17th, 2023. Staff received four comments from members of the public on Wheat Ridge speaks prior to this hearing. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan and other applicable plans. Staff believes that the proposed MUC zoning is consistent with the policies and goals in the city's comp plan and the Wadsworth Corridor Urban Renewal Area Plan. The property is identified as a neighborhood buffer area and is along a primary commercial corridor within the structure plan, a designation used for existing commercial areas, and which calls for the promotion of reinvestment in properties and the promotion of a mix of neighborhood-supporting uses, including residential use and office use. The Wadsworth Corridor Urban Renewal Area Plan calls for many of the same policies and goals of the city's comp plan, including high-quality architecture and design, the incorporation of new and existing uses that accommodate existing and future market demands, and the revitalization of existing neighborhoods. The Mixed Use Commercial zoning designation is appropriate for the subject property, allowing the existing land to become conforming and enabling the possibility of future redevelopment, which aligns with the city's adopted goals and policies. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons: Based on the character and land use patterns of the area, the MUC Zone District in this area is more appropriate than C1 in terms of allowed uses for the property. For that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff finds the zone change to the, to MUC is supported by the city's comprehensive plan and the Wadsworth Corridor Urban Renewal Area Plan, specifically the vision for high-quality architecture and design, the revitalization of existing neighborhoods, and reinvestment in aging commercial properties. This zone change request supports the comprehensive plan and affordable housing strategy by enabling investment in the property, by aligning the zoning with the city's mixed-use goals for this corridor, and by enabling multi-unit housing to be built on Wadsworth just outside of the commercial core and with good access to transit and multimodal facilities. The zone change would allow Foothills more flexibility in terms of their site plan. Following approval, Foothills would be required to submit a formal application for an administrative site plan review for the redevelopment of the property. Staff has not received or reviewed any development plans for the site at this time. If the zone change is not approved, Foothills can still proceed with multi-unit development on the balance of the MUC portions of the block. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to the public to speak on this item. I have several people signed up to speak. Our first speaker is Margie Robinson and Julie Wheelis on deck. If you would please give us your, once again, first name, last name, spell last name, and add an address, please.
Yes, my name is Margie Robinson, 4 Hillside Drive, 80215. I want to thank you for this opportunity to express my views. So I'm speaking tonight about why I support the rezoning at 44th and Wadsworth. I have spoken to council several times over the past years about the need for more affordable housing in Wheat Ridge, but it recently became more personal to me when a friend who lives at 44th and Vance, you know, just a block from this proposed development, expressed her concerns about the Ives development bringing more crime to her neighborhood and lowering home values. I volunteer with the Community Action Network at Jefferson Unitarian Church, where we work on issues of affordable housing. We partner with Together Colorado, an organization whose subcommittee on affordable housing has amassed tons of research on the effects of affordable housing on communities, and their research led them to the conclusion that affordable multifamily housing is an asset to communities, not a detriment. And I will summarize a small amount of their findings. And if anybody wants any of the information and the studies that have been done, I'm more than happy to provide it if you just give me your email address. So one of the first concerns: Does affordable housing bring increased crime? Fact: Research out of Minneapolis, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and Orange County, California, has shown that affordable housing results in crime rates staying the same or slightly decreasing. Next concern: Will affordable housing reduce home values in the adjacent neighborhoods? Fact: Research from Minneapolis, Orange County, Atlanta, University of Utah, and many others has found that building low-income housing does not lower the value of other homes in the area. My comments so far have related to affordable housing developments, but because a portion of the Ives development is to provide housing for homeless individuals, I would also like to briefly refer to a project in Denver. An apartment building was constructed using social impact bonds for individuals who were long-term homeless and had frequent interactions with the criminal justice system, and were high users of emergency rooms and detox clinics. They were described as the worst of the worst by police officers, social workers, and emergency room personnel. After three years of being housed, these individuals had 34% fewer law enforcement interactions, 65% fewer visits to detox facilities, 77% remained in stable housing after three years. This was far less expensive than having individuals on the streets cycling through the criminal justice system and using city emergency services. So in summary, as to the question of whether or not affordable housing negatively impacts neighborhoods, the majority of studies show that it does not typically decrease property values or increase crime rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julie Wheelis, and Dawn Underwood is on deck.
Hello, I'm Julie Wheelis, W-H-E-E-L-E-S-S, and I live at 7250 West 46th Place in Wheat Ridge. And I am here to express some concerns about the buildings that will be placed in the northeast corner of Wadsworth and 44th. While I understand there is a great need for temporary housing and low-income housing as a result of the current situation, and I support this type of housing, I do have concerns, and I would like some more information. My understanding is that the housing building is currently under construction, that the Bank of the West building will become offices, counselors, and medical care facilities, and then Pet Boys would be the maintenance building, but I'm not exactly sure what is included with this building. I, my main questions are: Will there be security in one or all of the buildings, and will it be 24/7 or specific hours? Will the housing be for overnight housing or temporary in nature or longer-term residence? Since there is a children's park and tennis courts that are, that is very close by and utilized and active at all times, all days of the week, what plans are there to ensure the safety of the Apple Becker Park such as privacy, a new privacy fencing, or other precautions by the city, the police, and the parks and recreation? Since all the facilities will be non-smoking, what are the plans for the designated smoking areas, and where will it be located by the park? There are many young children that enjoy this park, and we love it having that in our neighborhood. Do you anticipate increased foot traffic in relation to the park, and what are your concerns for the park's safety? And then, and one other comment is although the minimum requirements were met for informing the neighbors within 60 feet, which is .11 mile, this type of development affects much more than the 600 feet. I would ask that we would have a neighborhood meeting with a wider number of homeowners that were contacted and can participate, to help us keep informed about the details, and so that we can have a better understanding how this affects our properties and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dawn Underwood, and I have Alan Minietta on deck.
Hi, my name is Dawn Underwood, U-N-D-E-R-W-O-O-D. I'm here to speak tonight regarding the meeting that I attended on August 17th with council regarding the changes to the property at 44th and Wadsworth. At that time, Foothills Regional Housing Authority stated that retail and low-income housing do not mix well together. Many neighbors and myself are wanting to know all the facts and timelines about Phase One and Phase Two, as well as information about what the city and Parks and Recs are doing to ensure safety and well-being of not just that park, but the neighborhood, its residents, and existing retail that have been here for many years. Second, on Tuesday, August 1st, I spoke with Rachel about my concerns with impact of this development. On Wednesday, August 2nd, we talked, and she spoke of setting up a meeting to include police, Park and Rec council members, and Jefferson County housing or Foothills Regional Housing, so that we have a comprehensive understanding of the impact on the neighborhood. I have followed up several times in an attempt to coordinate this meeting, but not, have not heard back on a set date. We'd like to get this information out to the neighborhood and provide enough notice to be able to bring these questions and concerns through that neighborhood meeting where it involves the police and the council and the community. That's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alan Minietta. Is Mr. Minietta here? Give it just another moment. I don't see him coming forward. Do we have anybody, if you're joining us online, you may raise your hand in the virtual format. We're happy to bring you into the meeting. Is there anyone that has raised their hand? Okay. Are there any further members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Now is an opportunity to do so. And I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'm going to close our, our public's right to speak on this item, and I will open this up to questions from council.
Mr. Mayor, the city attorney would like to make a statement before you proceed.
Okay, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate being able to, just to remind not only council but more, pardon me, importantly, members of the public that are here and are, are listening, what the, the rules of the game are for quasi-judicial rezoning hearings. And I don't do this every time there's a rezoning hearing, but I know that there has been considerable public interest in this case, and I wanted to not only tell council, pardon me, but just assure members of the public that what the, the rules of the game are and why it, the council members have likely been not taking calls outside of the public hearing on this. I recognize that can be frustrating for members of the public that are used to contacting their council members, being able to talk to them in the grocery store, on the phone, and in other, other ways when things aren't quasi-judicial. And let me contrast that. Legislative, the next agenda item is going to be a change to the city's code on telecommunications occupation tax. That's a law that will apply across the city, and that's legislative, and the rules of the game for legislation, or you get to your legislators as a constituent anytime and any way you can, on the, pardon me, on the phone, you know, in the grocery store, wherever, because that's your job as legislators, to be available to them for legislation. But tonight, you wear a different hat. As the mayor mentioned at the beginning, this matter is quasi-judicial, and the mayor always states that when there are quasi-judicial matters, so that we know that the rules of the game are slightly different. I know council knows this, but let me tell you that a quasi-judicial matter, you're sitting not as legislators enacting law across the city, but instead as judges, that's why quasi-judicial, on a specific case where you're applying the, the law, in this case, the city's zoning ordinance, to a specific application. Now, I recognize it's the city that's the applicant here, but that's irrelevant. It's whatever the applicant is for rezoning, is still a person in front of the court, in front of you, to have their case judged on the basis of the law. And just like a regular trial that's in front of a judge, you don't have the judge being approached by witnesses or parties to the case outside of the hearing. That'd be, everyone would recognize that that'd be inappropriate, for me to take the judge to lunch if I've got a case in front of the judge. The same thing is true here, and so for that reason, there's a consequence to something being quasi-judicial, as this is, and that means that the council members individually can't have conversations with and hear from parties outside the case, not only the applicant parties, opponent parties, members of the general public. There is a forum, of course, for that, and it's the public hearing process. That's why our zoning code is very clear in requiring public hearings both before the planning commission and before the city council on rezonings. And that is the mechanism, that's the, the route by which concerned citizens can communicate to their council members on rezoning matters. And, and that is the route we have followed here. I recognize that citizens can be frustrated when the council members say, I'm sorry, on this one, I can't talk to you because it's, it's quasi-judicial, and often, I think, citizens maybe don't understand that distinction. There's no reason they should be really conversant about that, and that's why I take this opportunity not only to the council, but the members of the public that are here in the hall, and also those that might be listening, why council members have respectfully declined to speak with you on this matter outside of the, outside of the public hearing. Thanks for your indulgence. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Dahl. So now, we will open the floor up to questions from council. We'll start with Counselor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for coming and speaking tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for coming and speaking tonight. I know I've heard from a lot of residents in the district who have concerns about the overall project. I want to recognize right off the bat that this particular hearing tonight is about the specific small corner at Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth. This has been a really confusing process. I would say even some of us on council have been a little bit confused by this sort of island of a piece of property that's surrounded by a larger project that ultimately this piece of property is going to become part of. And I just want to share that the, the concerns around proper notification, while they followed the letter of the law, we realized through this, the letter of the law wasn't really in the spirit of the project. And so, a couple of things I just want to mention, just for clarification for people in the room, council's actually asked to revise notification procedure because of what we've learned through this, so that we're taking a look if a parcel like this that is going to be part of a larger project, that the boundary of the entire project is the notification boundary, so we're going to be taking a look at that in November, responding to concerns from District Two residents about that. And then, I'm just going to mention here, Councilor Omen and I are working with city staff to host a community meeting in October, so we are moving forward, and that will be to talk about the project at large. I do actually have some questions now, since that's what this is about. So, I, I asked these earlier, but I just think it's good to bring it forward again here. So this particular parcel is fifteen thousand square feet. What would be the possible access to this property if it weren't annexed or rezoned as part of the larger, the larger project?
If it wasn't going to be part of the larger project, all of the uses that are permitted and mixed use would be permitted on this property if the zone, if the zone change is approved.
Okay. And then, if, if the zone change were not approved, it would be incredibly limited, the uses on this particular process, property, correct?
Correct. The current C-one standards would still apply, so.
With the size of this parcel, that's incredibly limiting.
Correct.
Correct, okay. I think those are my only questions for now, I'll have more comments later, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I understand this is a rezoning case on this, but I do have a question as far as Applebacher Park goes, and what the staff, do they look at having more security, more fencing around the park as this project grows, and there's a housing development next to it, whereas now it's more open?
Well, we have housing developments next to most of our parks in the city, and, you know, we, we enforce and, and monitor all the parks the same, doesn't matter what type of housing is next to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions of staff? Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, again, I'll just echo what Mayor Protem Stites had said, and I know that this is a standalone rezoning that we're considering on council this evening, which happens to be for the larger Ives project that is already moving forward, and the property surrounding the Bank of the West has already been rezoned for the purpose of affordable housing. And I think what Councilmember Hulteen was, was kind of getting at is that this property isn't very large, and the C-one zoning is pretty restrictive, and there isn't really going to be a good use of this property if it were not to be used for the larger project at hand with the Ives, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and I could expand on that, if, if that's okay, Councilmember Dozeman. Yeah, the, the original parcel size was just under twenty-three thousand square feet. We, we took about seventy-five hundred square feet for the right-of-way that was necessary for Wadsworth, and then, so as somebody mentioned, there's about fifteen thousand square feet left. The city was required through federal processes to purchase the entire property, because just taking the seventy-five hundred square feet made the property unusable for the current bank usage, took away its parking, and took away its drive-through. So, there's, there's very little future development opportunities of this parcel on its own, especially with the new configuration of Wadsworth and Forty-Fourth Avenue, the access is, there's no direct access, there's no parking. So, yes, you're, the question is, it's, there's very limited uses in the future.
So, when council was discussing giving the property to Foothills Regional Housing for this project, I had asked the, the organization about priority for the city of Wheat Ridge and our housing and navigation program. At what point does that come into effect, and how will that be guaranteed? Will that happen at a later time, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, if I understand your question, because the city's contributing to this development, the city's getting.
Priority access for the affordable.
Some priority access, yes, we, we, that is part of the deal, and Foothills is here this evening, if you want to ask them directly, but that is, that is the agreement. I don't have the specific numbers this evening, but we would have access for our navigation program to place individuals into those homes. For, again, for long-term stays too, this is not a transitional development. Foothills Regional Housing does not do transitional housing, there's no funding available before this, this is permanent, long-term housing.
Correct. And so, I think the term affordable housing is thrown around quite a bit, and what that means to the general public probably varies just as much as it does to those of us on the dais. Can you maybe speak to that, or allow the applicant to, to speak to that, as far as like, the average median income, and, and who this affordable housing project would, would, like, the demographic that it would cater to?
Sure. The long-term supportive housing is going to be individuals making up to eighty percent AMI, which is about sixty-nine thousand for, for an individual. The average for the whole development is going to be at sixty percent AMI, and that's about fifty-two thousand dollars a year for the individual.
So, in my mind, that's entry-level workers, those can even include teachers, first responders, those working within the restaurant industry in the community, would all likely fall within that AMI, and could be served through this housing project.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Omen.
Thank you, Mayor. So one other question is, is, could you explain how this helps the city's requirement for Proposition One, Two, Three, the adding affordable housing?
Sure, and maybe Lauren could jump in too, but as Elena mentioned, city council did recently adopt affordable housing strategy in January, I guess, of this year, and, and one of the major policy recommendations in there is to provide material support to affordable housing developers, such as Foothills Regional Housing. The city is not affordable, we're not developers, we don't build affordable housing, and land banking and providing parcels is, is one, one, one way to do that. So Prop One, Two, Three is, is a citizen-initiated, I think it was a citizen, it was voted on by the citizens, it was approved, a portion of, of income tax money is being put aside, and there's going to be money available for affordable housing projects across the state. The city has to, and that's coming up tonight, on tonight's agenda, the city has to commit to increasing its affordable housing above its current base by three percent over three year period, and for Wheat Ridge, we're proposing tonight, that number would be about seventy-two units per year. So this project would, would help us meet those requirements under Prop One, Two, Three, so any affordable housing developer in Wheat Ridge, not just the city, would be eligible for those, those new funding sources from the state.
Thank you. Thank you. Before I close the public hearing and ask for motion, are there any further questions from council of staff? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilor Hulteen, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number Twenty-two, Twenty-Twenty-three, in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at Seventy-five, Seventy-five West Forty-Fourth Avenue, from commercial one, C-one, to mixed-use commercial M-U-C. On second reading, order it published, and that it take, takes effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second?
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, I would just like to say, I, I've thought a lot, I would feel really frustrated if I lived in the neighborhood around here, the noticing probably felt kind of like a sleight of hand, because following the letter of the law felt like it wasn't actually reaching the neighborhood. And as I mentioned in my earlier comments, it's something that we've learned, that this is a loophole we need to address, and there are very rare circumstances where this comes up, and I just want to recognize that if I lived in the neighborhood, I would probably feel similar, that the, the city was trying to kind of pull a fast one. But we're not, we're really dedicated to trying to do everything we can to make sure everyone has a home. It's important value for us as, as elected officials and us as in a city. And I'm hopeful and optimistic that a community meeting with the city and with Scott Omen, Councilor Omen and myself, will help address questions that neighbors have, that, you know, about any large development coming into the neighborhood has an impact. I think this is a great location for this proj, project, it is on transit, so that people who are living there are able to access different learning and working opportunities, so that long-term housing actually really substantially provides the stability that they need to be good citizens in our community and in their own lives. One thing I've heard about this project is that it includes more than just one-bedroom units, I believe it includes two- and three-bedroom, and getting nods from Foothills, so this is actually, people, a lot of times are not aware how many families are experiencing homelessness. Our neighborhood schools, I think you'd be really surprised to hear how many homeless kids we've got in our neighborhood schools. So this is, again, it's an exciting opportunity, I just really, you know, empathize with neighbors who feel like that the process was less than upfront and honest, we were following the letter of the law, and in this case, the law did not serve the needs of the community. We're working to repair that, so that doesn't happen again, and we're looking forward to having a community meeting, and we're hoping to host it actually in the neighborhood, so it's easy for people to attend. That said, I'm just really excited, District Two is, is, has two affordable housing projects in it, and this is something really near, near and dear to me, and I'm proud to be voting that we're able, as a city, to both donate the land and support the zoning, so that everyone in Wheat Ridge can, can have a home. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, it's tough to say anything better than Councilor Hulteen does, so I will just kind of second what Councilor Hulteen said, and I absolutely agree that we were following the letter of the law on this, but in this case, I do believe the law should be changed as far as the notification goes, so hopefully that'll be something that we have coming up in the next couple of months. But as far as affordable housing goes, this is the perfect place for it, this is the, as far as you look at the maps and, and things of Wheat Ridge, this is right on a transit corridor, this is right near shopping, retail, grocery stores, things like that. This, hopefully will have a, a small impact on the neighborhood, or as small a neighbor, or impact on the neighborhood as possible, because it is on the corridor, so this is something that can feed Wadsworth more than it'll hopefully feed back into the neighborhood. So I do believe that this is a, a good investment for our city, and, and a good investment for Foothills Regional Housing as we move forward. As, as we do move forward, I, I do look forward to hearing that Councilor Hulteen and Councilor Omen are, meet with the citizens over there and, and keep you guys informed of what's going on, but I do trust that they're going to do that, and I know that our, our police and our Parks Department will do their best to make sure that it's a, a good development for, for everybody over there as well, so. But this, we're talking about teachers, we're talking about nurses, we're talking about police officers, that's who this, this development is for. So I think we learned during COVID that having one type of anything in the city doesn't work, we need to have multiple sources of businesses, multiple types of housing, and this is a good start. So this is a, definitely a good start unto our affordable housing, and the fact that we're able to lead by example and donate this land, I think is, is a good start, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Omen.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to do is I want to thank those who came tonight and testified, and some who supported, and there are some who had a lot of questions, and, and those online, it's really important that you come in and let us hear you, what your thoughts and questions are. I also want to thank, start off and thank staff, I know staff has spent a lot of time going through this, there's been questions that have come up, and really appreciate you going through and, and helping us on city council relay that information back to our constituents. Affordable housing is such a crucial need, and seeing how many people that, lives that can change of having something that's going to be permanent. And the biggest thing that I always hear is there's always a lot of support for affordable housing, but it's, it's always tough to, where do we, where are we going to put it? And the location that we've, we've come up with is, it's on a, you know, major arterial, it's right in the center of the city, it's within walking distance of the post office, grocery stores, we have a, you know, brand-new bike connection on that side that can get you on the Clear Creek Trail, so the access is, is really nice, and that, we're just, I'm really grateful that we have, you know, the Foothills Housing Authority and Jefferson County as, as partners on this. There's been a lot of support from other local officials as well, and, and I'll keep it short, but I just want to say that I would encourage all my constituents to sign up for Weaver Speaks, go and take a look at that, and you can voice your opinion, you can sign up for email, sign up for texts, and, and get notified, that, you know, please be involved, and, you know, we'll, we'll keep moving forward and trying to let everybody know what these, what these things are, as long as, you know, we're within the, the realm of what our attorney, Dahl, had said about, you know, quasi-judicial cases. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am happy to support this project, I think that this is the appropriate place for the density that we are proposing, and we have identified affordable housing as a priority on this, on this council, and, you know, I really appreciate the partnership with Foothills Regional Housing, so the city of Wheat Ridge would not be able to fund or develop a project of this magnitude, and I hope that Foothills Regional Housing also recognizes the strong partnership with the city of Wheat Ridge, in not only giving you this land, but also, you know, allocating some of our private activity bonds to projects within the city and surrounding municipalities. And so I, I really hope to see something concrete in regards to Wheat Ridge receiving priority in housing, people experiencing homelessness in our direct community, and so that we can strengthen that partnership and, and maintain it for, for years to come. Like some of my co-council members have mentioned, in regards to transportation in this area being on a major commercial corridor, the Applebacher Park is a buffer into the neighborhood, and this offers a variety of, of housing that's going to serve a diverse population and demographics that otherwise cannot afford to live in our community, but do work in our community, and so I really appreciate that, and I'm happy to support this, and I really appreciate the partnership and the transparency with staff. I think one of the biggest complaints I had as a citizen prior to getting on city council was that I was not informed of various projects, and at that point in time, the communication was the public notice at City Hall, and then if you signed up for the email through the city of Wheat Ridge website, you could receive information that way, and then snail mail was the primary communication through the city six years ago, prior to me getting on council, and in the time since being on council, we have implemented so many ways to get information out to the public, and we are transparent, whether it's through the connection, it's through the Neighborhood Gazette, it's posted on our website, Wheat Ridge Speaks, I mean, we, the access to our government is amazing, and the responsiveness to staff in answering questions to the public is also great, and so, like, we've come leaps and bounds from, I would say, you know, six years ago, ten years ago, and so, I've, I've followed some of the conversations on, on various social media platforms, and while there have been a handful of citizens that have expressed concerns, I think there's been significant support amongst our residents, and one of the most prioritized items facing our community that has been expressed in our surveys is affordable housing, and so we're following suit, and I appreciate that we're moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for all of my other councillors' comments. I just want to come back to a topic, which is what is, what does affordability look like, and who is that? And I would just like to put a face on it, if I had to, I would not be able to afford, I'm a teacher locally, and I would not be able to have afforded my house now, and so I would actually be eligible to live in this, and this would be one of my only options, just to give you an idea of what that looks like. So I think it's important when we talk about what does affordability look like, that can look like, certainly from the homeless ass. look like certainly from the homeless aspect, but it also looks like people up through the middle incomes, especially in the Denver area. So I think this is a really great project, and I think it's going to serve a lot of people who work locally, who do important things in our community that don't happen to get paid a ton of money. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd just like to say thank you for all of the prior comments about this project in particular. One thing that I just kind of wanted to bring up too is that, you know, five years ago was the first time we had a study session focused around affordable housing, workforce housing, housing attainability in our community. And many of the solutions that the experts brought to us were not options for us in Wheat Ridge. There, you know, there are things like subsidies for developers. Well, we can't do that necessarily. There's giving them land where we didn't own anything at the time that we could do anything with. And so, you know, a lot of those solutions were not available to us, and so us having this opportunity is really great. We have had a few things where the Fruitdale Lofts, we were able to put some affordable units into the renovation and preservation of that historic building. And we got affordable senior housing on a piece of land that we owned. But since then, we really haven't been able to do much. And so for us to be able to utilize this opportunity now, honestly, five years ago, I just thought we would never be able to have very, very much opportunity in our community to do this. And so I'm very happy to see that we are going to be able to offer this to our community.
Thank you. Councilor Houghton.
Thanks. I forgot to mention two things. One is I did take notes, Julie and Dawn, from everything you said were important to you to make sure they're addressed, so I did take note of those. And then something that's come up the whole time through this process is just an interest in wanting to see retail on the site, and we've addressed that pretty thoroughly, I think, at previous sessions. And so I'm not going to address the possibility of retail here because I think it's been thoroughly exhausted that it's not an option. However, I just want to point out, you know, bringing in 200 new units or whatever the final unit count is, actually is really good for retail on the corridor as a whole. I think my district is struggling with the impacts of the Wadsworth construction, and it's impacting our retail partners on Wadsworth and 44th. And one of the best things that we can be doing for those retail partners is bringing in more rooftops. And even though this is, you know, 50 to 80% in my project, it's good for our local economy too, and it's really good for retail on the corridor. So it's good to see development coming in, and as you can imagine, I'm going to be supporting yes for this.
Thank you. Councilor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that this is a reason to be thankful for the Wadsworth project. We wouldn't be having this property, okay, if this was not going on, and that obviously has been the issue. So this is a very good place to have this be located where there is the transit, okay? And there's also grocery store, and we hope that it continues to be there, and there's retail. So these people also might not all have cars, so they can walk to places, okay? They might have bikes or whatever. But it's a very good location where there's main streets and not so far, like, away from, like, a food source or whatever, where I do know of some buildings that may occur in other places for affordable housing that aren't close to grocery stores and things. And if you don't have a car, that's really a problem. So I do support this. I think it's a very good location, and with so many more people being there, I do believe that the police will be involved in checking out and watching things at the park and, you know, the citizens need to report things that they see, and that's how we find out about it. So it's everybody kind of working together, so I do support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number Two. Councilor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like me to read the issue?
No, because we have a staff report on this.
Okay, thank you. This is Council Bill Number 24-2023, an ordinance amending Article Three of Chapter Twenty-Two of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the basic local telecommunications service.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. I think our photographer this evening is going to give a brief presentation on this, maybe with help from our city attorney.
Thank you for the promotion again. Thank you. If it's okay, I will just touch on the issue statement, and then I have a few other remarks. We're here because this code, the code regarding the taxation of basic local telecommunications requires revision. The code is today is based on the false premise that Lumen, formerly US West, Quest, and Century Link, is still the primary provider of telephone lines in the city. And based on this premise, competitors are charged a per-line rate computed from Lumen's number of lines and the flat occupation tax that they've been paying since, and that's per the ordinance from 1997. So due to the rapid decline of landlines provided by Lumen, the per-line charge to other providers has risen substantially. And furthermore, the current code is confusing as to how cellular lines are treated from the taxation perspective. We met in study session. I attended your meeting on August 21st, and we talked about this issue. We talked about how the telecommunications business has evolved significantly since prior council in 1997, past that ordinance. So the current code is out of date, and we need to update it to ensure stability and predictability for both telecommunications providers and consumers. I'll just touch on a couple of the salient points from our conversation. Based on the current code, the rate today, so the monthly fee per line, which we froze artificially at the 2022 rate, is $8.24 per line, per month. If we had not frozen it this year, and again, that's based on the denominator of Lumen's current lines that they have in the city as the incumbent. If we had not frozen the rate this year, the rate would have been $23.12 per month, per line. And based on the incumbent's number of lines that they just reported to us, the rate in 2024 will be $34.30 per line, per month, if council decides to leave the code as is. So we talked about wanting to ensure equity, fairness among providers, and also to maintain the city's revenue streams at the August 21st study session. And as a reminder, council consented to do three things with this ordinance. Excuse me. The first is to update the definition from basic local telecommunications service to basic local exchange service, which is more common terminology found in both state and federal law. This definition in the ordinance also clarifies the 1997 ordinance that cellular is considered basic local exchange service. The second thing that this council consented to was to remove the incumbent provider who pays $190,575 per year. So there will be no incumbent provider. Our, the plan is that the ordinance will ensure equity and fairness, that all providers pay exactly the same or charge exactly the same. And the third is that in 2024, we set the rate at $3.55 per line, per month, which is a reduction of $4.69 per line, per month, currently charged. And then the fee is then allowed to change according to the Denver Boulder Consumer Price Index annually. This is an important step in updating our telecommunications code. We want to get these notices out to providers so that they know what to expect in 2024, next month. We want to ensure that predictability for the providers and for the consumers. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Doll. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have a very minor kind of terminology issue that I'd like just the authority of the council to correct if it's deemed necessary to do so. As the city photographer just now mentioned, of the three things that is happening in the ordinance, and one was the change in terminology from basic local telecommunications service to basic local exchange service. And there is, however, still a reference to basic local telecom service in the definition of basic local exchange service provider. It gets complex. And I would suggest we just switch telecommunications to exchange here tonight, but for the fact that we work with an expert in this area, a good friend of mine, Ken Feldman, who's really the leading expert, and terminology is a big deal for, in this arena and with respect to the regulation of these services. I'm pretty sure that that's just a terminology change we should be making to make it consistent. But were it not for being in this specialized arena, I just recommend that we make that change as a part of the motion. But I want to be able to check in with Ken, just to make sure I've caught just a minor change that we need to make. So when you get around to making a motion, I would just ask that you add to the end of that motion with such terminology corrections as approved by the city attorney. Then I can have that call. We can fix it if necessary, and it won't delay the approval of the ordinance. So whoever's making the motion, just add to the tail end of the motion with such terminology corrections as approved by the city attorney, and that'll do it for us. Now, just add to the, don't make the change in the ordinance itself. You got that? Thank you. I'm reluctant to just tell you to, okay, make the motion and change this word to that word because I really do want to check. So if I'm given the authority to make the correction after I've done the checking tomorrow morning, that will work for me.
I think we have that revised wording for the motion, but we'll see what happens when the motion is read.
So, but before we go to, before we go to questions from council, I would like to invite
the public to speak on this Agenda Item Number Two. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item, but if you are in council chambers, we'd be happy to hear from you. If you'd please come to the podium. If you're joining us online, please raise your hand, and we're happy to bring you into the meeting. And I will give it just a moment and check with our web administrators, see if anyone has raised their hand. And, okay, we will, we will close our public's right to speak on this Agenda Item Number Two, and now we will go to questions from council. Questions of council under staff or our city attorney, we're going to put him in the loop here too, to ask questions of. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So can you explain why we're going to be doing the 355 per line and how many anticipated lines we would have?
Yes, thank you. We, we looked at some neighboring cities in terms of how they calculated their number of lines. And again, as one of our, the goals was to try and, you know, stability in that revenue stream, we estimated 20,000 lines in the city of Wheat Ridge, sort of a combination of landlines, businesses, and cellular, and then used last year's revenue number to come up with that fee. And again, that was sort of based on the proportion of lines. We use Lakewood as the model. We looked at their total number of lines.
So at the study session, I had kind of balked at us choosing to go with the higher number and in comparison to Lakewood, who has a significant higher population than we do. And I would say that $20,000 is a pretty conservative number, right? I mean...
20,000 lines?
20,000 lines, yeah. Where did you, or what are we basing that off of?
That's a really good question as to how the staff actually said as a, I mean, they literally, they took the population of Lakewood, and I believe they picked another community, but that's the one I know for sure, and they, because most other communities are also collecting on cellular, as we discussed. So they, they get their reports of total numbers of lines, and then we just compared that number to the population, and that's how we came up with the 20,000 lines. So we have 14,000 households in Wheat Ridge.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I can't be clearer.
Further, further questions on this item? So let me just, if I can just follow up on, Councilor Dozeman, the theory on this one, Ms. Check, is that we would be revenue neutral?
Yes.
So we expect to generate roughly the same amount of revenue going forward as we have? If we had a discrepancy, significant discrepancy in that, might we revisit that?
We certainly could.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions? Okay, seeing none, would the, may I have a motion on this item? Just a minute. Were, are there any questions before I close the public hearing? Get all the things down. I'm going to close the public hearing. Councilor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
You may, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 24-2023, an ordinance amending Article Three of Chapter Twenty-Two of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning basic telecommunications service on second reading, such terminology corrections as approved by the city attorney, order it published, and that it take effect upon adoption and signature by the mayor and city clerk as permitted by Section Five, Point Eleven of the Charter.
A second. We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So while I agree with the logic and the reasoning behind going from a landline to a just general line encompassing all of the cellular and other uses or telecommunications uses, I really think that we should have had a broader conversation and used this opportunity to represent the citizenry a little bit better and lower our prices per line because this is going to affect a far larger number of people than the 463 people in 2024 that would have been affected by the significant increase of the landline costs. And so as much as I appreciate the intention, I think that we have a significant, significantly larger number of lines, and we could have drilled down that price a little bit closer to our other neighboring municipalities like Arvada as opposed to Lakewood. So I will not be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a discussion on the motion? No further discussion on the motion. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes six to one, with Councilor Dozeman dissenting.
Thank you very much. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Three. Council Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 25-2023, an ordinance amending Sections Two dash fifty-three and Two dash fifty-five of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning membership of boards and commissions. Don't do the issue.
Yeah, do the issue.
Okay, at issue. The city of Wheat Ridge has seen an exceptional increase in the desire to join city boards and commissions. Recognizing this, council studied how to provide greater opportunities for interested residents and make general improvements to the city's boards and commissions.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Council Hutchinson, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 25-2023, an ordinance amending Sections Two dash fifty-three and Two dash fifty-five of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning membership of boards and commissions. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, October 9, 2023 at 6:30 PM, as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that...
as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it takes effect on March 1, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppe, or the clerk? Yes?
So I'm not exactly sure how to ask this, but I am wondering why we're setting this hearing when we have a study session on October 2 about the non-codified committees, and some of these rules would be affecting them, and if we need to be including non-codified committees in this ordinance.
It's my understanding we, we took care of, of these in two separate phases. This was all, this was specifically with boards and commissions. The study session that's coming up is about special committees, how you would like to appoint those, who appoints them. They're, they're probably not going to overlap any, any of the rules or regulations.
So I ask because city staff presented to Sustainable Wheatridge this last week on this and was informed that they'd be subjected to these as well, in terms of like the term limits and the length of the term, appointment, time of term, and that they'd be needing to update their bylaws to be complicit with this. And so I just want to check and make sure there's consistency of understanding.
I don't think that's the case. That's a separate discussion, in my understanding. That might be a recommendation that's going to come out of that discussion, but.
Yeah, that's exactly it. So there are two separate conversations that we, we had, which is everything related to boards and commissions, and then everything related to the uncodified boards and, and commissions, the special committees is a separate conversation. And so the conversation that will be happening on October 2 was sort of to prep that conversation. So as it's being presented, if anyone from Sustainable Wheatridge or the other groups wants to have an opinion that they'd like to share, that they wanted to be informed of the recommendation that will be coming up on October 2, it's a separate conversation.
Okay. But that recommendation includes the same things that are covered here around term lengths and number of terms.
Correct.
And things like the ethics and ability to remove members and things like that. Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Would the clerk please poll the council?
And that motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We will go now to Agenda Item Number Four. Councilor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 26-2023, an ordinance amending Sections 11-504, 11-506, and 2-80 of the Wheatridge Code of Laws Concerning Short-Term Rental Licensing Enforcement. At issue, city council enacted legislation concerning the licensing and enforcement of short-term rentals, STRs, in February of 2021. Since that time, staff has been working to implement the legislation by licensing STRs, collecting the applicable lodgers tax, and enforcing the provisions of the original ordinance. It has become apparent that there are some weaknesses in the existing code that make enforcement action against illegal STRs challenging. Staff recommends a code amendment so that council's original intent to ensure that only legally licensed STRs exist in Wheatridge can be realized.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 26-2023, an ordinance amending Sections 11-504, 11-506, and 2-80 of the Wheatridge Code of Laws Concerning Short-Term Rental Licensing Enforcement on First Reading. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, October 9, 2023 at 6:30 p.m. as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it take effect upon adoption and signature by the mayor and city clerk as permitted by Section 5.11 of the Charter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Ohm. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, that motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. This will bring us to Item Number Five. Councilor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 46-2023, a resolution in support of the city filing a commitment to the State of Colorado Division of Housing to increase the city's supply of affordable housing to be eligible for future Proposition 123 funds. At issue, addressing housing affordability is one of the city's and state's most pressing issues. Colorado voters enacted Proposition 123 in 2022 that will make several hundred million dollars available for affordable housing statewide starting in late 2023. For a project to be eligible for these funds in Wheatridge, the city must file a commitment to increase its supply of affordable housing over the next three years to the State of Colorado Division of Housing. This commitment is due by November 1, 2023.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. I have a brief presentation from Lauren Mikulak, Community Development Director.
Okay, Director Mikulak.
Thank you. So it was just a month ago that we discussed Proposition 123 in study session. What we didn't know in August was the specific number that we would be committing to, and our team has been working with the Department of Local Affairs, DOLA, to understand their baseline tool. It takes into consideration a lot of factors, interest rates, household incomes, a variety of different metrics, mortgage insurance, and it spits out a number that, based on real data, feels a little like a black box, but that tells us sort of what our baseline is and, most importantly, sort of what our growth goal is. There's a lot of different ways to manipulate those tools and yield a bunch of different outcomes, and we were really appreciative for DOLA's input and assistance to land us at what we think is a pretty achievable number. It's 218 over three years, which does average out to 72 or 73 per year. Those units can be rental or ownership. They can be existing or new. We have a housing program administrator starting in less than a month, and so we feel really confident that we could meet that goal. What we're asking for tonight is approval of this resolution, which would set that commitment, set that number, and then we would go ahead and file within the week to DOLA.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from council, I would like to invite the public to speak on this item. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here in, in council chambers, you may come to the podium, and we will recognize you to speak. If you're joining us online, please raise your hand. We're happy to bring you into the meeting. I'll give it just a moment to see if anybody comes to the podium. Nobody's making a move now, and I'll check and see if anyone is making a move online to raise their hand. So no one, no one is raising their hand, so we will move past our public's right to speak on this item and go to questions from council. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify that the Ives Project would count towards this number, or...
We know the next phases of Ives would. We need to get clarity, I think, on the one that's under construction today.
Lot of, there's a lot of unknowns about that, exactly when is it that building permit? It's when it's, people move in, so we're still working with DOLA on that.
Additional questions on this item? I, I had one. There was provisions in the Proposition 123 for an accelerated building permit schedule. How do we feel about that? Is that, is that an achievable project?
It's a great question. Fortunately, it doesn't kick in for a couple of years. It's still being studied. There's some, and some outreach to communities. We are, what we're going to do, I can't remember if I talked about this at the study session, is sort of test ourselves between now and when that provision kicks in, and just understand where are we today? If we bump an affordable housing project to the top of the queue every time it comes in, can we meet that deadline, those dates? There's also, there's still more clarity to be provided by the state of how we measure those 90 days. So, you know, I think, I think you all have been very clear in the desire to support projects, and our staff feels the same way. So I think we feel pretty confident. There is a funding source should a community need more staff to achieve those goals, and we'll probably look into that, too.
Thank you. And I, I might add that I think it would be a great goal to make all permits available in 90 days, so.
I agree.
We'll, we'll see if we can streamline our, our, our procedures so that that happens and, and is, provides safe, safe and, and ready building permits. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. Councilor Dozeman, may I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 46-2023, a resolution in support of the city filing a commitment to the State of Colorado Division of Housing to increase the city's supply of affordable housing to be eligible for future Proposition 123 funds.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Six. Mayor Protem Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to amend the contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the Recreation Center parking lot repair project to allow for an additional contingency amount of $30,000 for a total not to exceed amount of $619,472. At issue, a contract for the repair of the Recreation Center parking lot was approved by city council in June 2023 in the amount of 485,972, $972, plus a staff-managed contingency of $48,500 for a total not to exceed contract amount of $534,472. On August 28, 2023, the city council approved an additional contingency amount of $55,000 for an additional items associated with the ADA modifications, electrical vehicle, striping, and drainage improvements. The actual cost of the change order exceeds the approved amount, so staff is requesting that the contingency amount be increased by an additional $30,000 to cover all of the items fully. This would increase the total not to exceed amount of the contract to $619,472.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, we have a further, further staff presentation?
We don't. Our public works directors here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I go to questions from council, I will invite the public to speak on this. Once again, I have, don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here in council chambers and would like to speak, please come to the podium. Once again, if you're joining us online, please raise that hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting. And I don't see anybody raising a hand, so we will close our public's right to speak on this item, and we'll go to questions from council. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Can, can we touch on exactly what drove the cost up? Like, I see that it's some striping, but I feel like the paint, it really wouldn't drive up the cost that much?
No, not, not so much the paint. It was, we're just modifying the design, so we're, we found out kind of after the fact, after we bid the project, that there was a desire to add more ADA handicap spots for the building, even more than what's required by code. So we've modified the design to add them all along the east, or excuse me, the north side of the building. Right now, they sit both in the parking lot near the front entrance as well as along the building. And so there's been modifications to the actual design that require additional concrete work, which adds to the striping, and then we're adding additional of the truncated domes, the ADA ramps that lead up from those ADA spots. Then on the back, we're adding some drainage improvements. Right now, there's sort of, what's called a spill curb that goes off on the south edge of the property. Instead, we're going to build an actual curb and gutter to kind of channelize all the drainage to one point before it goes down. So that's, we didn't anticipate quite the costs of how much we were adding, and so we had to come back for additional funds.
What do you estimate the life being of this kind of a project? Like, when would we have to do this again?
So we did, if you recall, we, we, the original plan was to completely reconstruct that, as I understand it, the parking lot sits on an old dump site or some very poor soils, so there's very large cracks in it. The original intent of the project was to completely reconstruct it, remove about a foot to a foot and a half of the material, and then build it back up again. Instead, what we're doing is putting in a GeoGrid material, and we anticipate that the, this project should last at least 10 to 15 years without the need for total reconstruction. So we can push off that total reconstruction for a longer period.
So would that, in essence, be saving us money right now?
And in the long term. So we're not guaranteed by that, doing that reconstruction, which was, I think, we estimated about 1.8 million was budgeted, that we could ensure a longevity of more than 20 to 25 years. So we feel that this kind of still impactful project will still, even if we had to do it twice, is going to be less than doing a total reconstruction. So again, probably about 10 to 15-year timeframe, we'll be looking at it again, but we will do probably more regular maintenance to the lot that we haven't done over the past 20 or so years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does this include the enhanced safety for the Clear Creek Trail crossing through the parking lot, including increased visibility, signage?
Yes. So we're adding, we're modifying both pedestrian ramps as you cross the parking lot driveway from the, the trail to the other side of the trail, and it kind of goes across that main intersection there that's also marked with crosswalk markings.
Great, thank you. And it includes signage notifying people in the parking lot to look for pedestrians and bicyclists crossing through there?
In accordance with the MUTCD, there's, yes, certain places where we're going to add that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion, or discussion questions from council? Seeing none. Mayor Protem Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move to amend the contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the Recreation Center parking lot repair project to allow for additional contingency amount of $30,000 for a total not to exceed amount of $619,472.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hutchinson. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our regular agenda items. We will now go to, uh, City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
We have a special study session coming up, so I'll defer any comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. We will go with elected officials matters. Just raise your hand if you have a matter tonight. Councilor Hoppe?
Two quick things. I'd like to say thank you to everybody for supporting the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Porchlight Family Justice Center is, is a place where there, we have over 25 other nonprofits co-located in the same space, so if, and we serve victims of violence. So domestic violence, child abuse, elderly abuse, sex trafficking, and sexual assault. We have a medical suite. We have a hair salon. We have a childcare facility where your children can be taken care of while you're receiving your mental health counseling through JCMH, or while you're there working with a legal advocate through Family Tree. So our fundraiser, our second annual fundraiser is October 19 at the Buffalo Rose, and so I'm inviting everybody to join us. You can go to Porchlight Family Justice Center and get your tickets there, or if you have something you would like to donate for our silent auction, please let me know. And then the second thing is, the county treasurer, DeTulio, had not made it all the way through his comments this evening during his three minutes, and so he asked me to, he gave us memos, and he asked me to read, read the memo. It's, it's a long one, so I'm going to pull up the pieces that I know that we didn't hear. To clarify, Tabor requires governments in Colorado to refund revenues collected above the Tabor limit for the given fiscal year or seek voter approval to retain the revenue. There are a variety of ways that can be used to refund the revenue to the taxpayers. One of them can be applying a credit to your property tax. The next one is mailing checks. Jefferson County has chosen to mail checks. According to treasurer DeTulio, the Jefferson County treasurer's office will cash any check under $200 with a valid ID. An additional, an additionally, treasurer's office asks you not to send your checks back, but to cash them. The funds cannot be used by the county. And I would say Porchlight Family Justice Center could use those funds, so you can send them right over to us. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Hoppe. Any further, Councilor Holtein?
Thank you. Happiness Gardens report, there are a lot of green tomatoes for the picking. The food forest that's been planted has a lot of green tomatoes, and I think a lot of us know if you pick green tomatoes and bring them home, that's what, they ripen, and they turn the right color, and you can enjoy them. So feel free to grab some green tomatoes at Happiness Gardens. I also just want to have two other quick comments. Today, tonight, we recognized breast cancer awareness, and when they read this, the statistic that one in eight women will have breast cancer in their lives, at the time, there were 20 women in the room. And that's a very sobering statistic, and luckily, it's something with good monitoring and detection can be treated. And so ladies, please check and take care of yourselves. We used to have buddy check nine, so you can, you can still do that. And then today, I rode my bike on Pier Street, which is all ripped up because it's getting resurfaced, and I'm excited about that because those bike lanes needed some attention, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the, the new version of Pier Street with the new and improved bike lanes on it. So meanwhile, right now, it's, it's zero fun to ride a bike on, so I'm looking forward to it, not just because the way it... So, I'm looking forward to it, not just because the way it rides now is terrible. And that's all from me tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, I was with my wife with about 400 other people at the National Public Lands Day at Anderson Park, and we cleaned up a lot of trash. I don't know how many hundreds of pounds of trash.
52,000 pounds, or 42,000 pounds, yeah.
It was a lot, a lot of garbage. And a big thank you to Jefferson County and the city for being partners on this. And I was honored to have the mayor there, along with County Commissioners Andy Kerr and Leslie Dell Camper. Director O'Donnell was there. Want to say thank you to all the Wheat Ridge PD for their support and all the Parks and Rec staff. It takes a lot. It's a big event. It happens really quickly, and it just goes off so, so smooth. And it was, it was a beautiful day, so really appreciate that. Thank you, everybody.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you very much to Jonathan and Chad in the IT Department. I was here twice this week to try to get the computer kind of going. This is at least the second episode in a couple of years that's come up where things have been all messed up and couldn't access anything. And I'm just wondering, there was a mention of permits here that just came up. I'm wondering, do we really have enough IT people that work here for when something happens and we do need to get permits and all this kind of stuff? Because it took a while, and I'm only one person, you know? So, I'm just wondering about that because we went through that for a long time, two years ago.
Well, I know we've been tested, and we've got a lot of new things happening, so thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go quickly. Counselor Weaver and I had our District Three meeting two weeks ago. It was phenomenal, and thank you to Wheat Ridge Police who came out there and helped us with that. Farmers 5000 was fantastic at the high school, again, about a week or so ago, and it was a lot of fun to get out there and see the community and help support the high school and all the elementary schools. And again, my kid's school won this year, so excited about that. The mayor and I were at the ribbon cutting for the Wolf and Wildflower on 38th Avenue the other day. A great little wine bar. It's fantastic. Go in and check it out. There's two ribbon cuttings this Friday, one both on 38th, one on Shannon and Wilson at 10:30, and Mass FX Media at 11:30. So, I'm looking forward to cutting those ribbons. So, I believe that's me.
It's you.
The Wheat Ridge Candidate Forum is this Wednesday, Wednesday, the 27th. It's 6:00 PM. I believe it is here in City Hall Chambers. Looking forward to that. And then, I want to give a big shout out to all of my neighbors and sustainable Applewood villages for putting on one heck of a block party this weekend. After being elected the last couple of years, I've got to go to a lot of block parties. Our block party pretty much kills it. Lots, lots of cool stuff and lots of kids. So, a lot of fun. So, thank you to everybody who helped put that on this weekend.
Okay. Thank you. That almost brings us to the end of our meeting. I would like to continue on with, Counselor Ohm mentioned the National Public Lands Day event at Anderson Park on Sunday, or on Saturday, and it was really a great event. There was a lot of, a lot of people there doing great work in our, in our community. We want to thank all of the people that helped put that together. We had a lot of great, great, great support from all of the, all of the staff and all the departments in our city, and they did a great job in having a Grateful Dead cover band, so we appreciate that. Wolf and Wildflower got to do that ribbon cutting. Great new restaurant on 38th Avenue. Hope you'll stop by and see them. They've got a great business model and great, great food and wine. I want to take a minute to thank Dr. Michelle Haney for the work that she's done at Red Rocks Community College and throughout education in her, in her career. In honor of her leadership in education, I wore my, my school bus tie today, which, which shows a lot of kids riding, riding a school bus. And she was certainly a great bus driver and a great leader for her, for her educational efforts in our, throughout the whole state, really. So, Dr. Haney, I want to thank you for your work with, in our community and in Jefferson County, but, but also the great work you've done throughout your career, and wish you a lot of luck on the next chapter going forward. So, we've got a special study session coming right after this. We're going to take a break and come back a little bit after 8:30. It's about, you know, seven or eight minutes, depending upon what clock you're looking at. And we will be back in, in special study session. So, if there's no more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned. council, we will stand adjourned. Okay. I would like to call to order the special study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for September 25th, 2023. We have one agenda item is our bill, no, item number one, billboard regulator, regulations and proposed amendments. We have already invited the public to speak on this item, and so I will go directly to Mr. Goff.
Thank you. I'll go directly to Ms. Mikulak.
Thank you. So, I'm here tonight to request consensus on a few proposed amendments. We are bringing this tonight specifically sort of why now, because of lessons learned over the last couple of years and a few specific challenges that we had last year in implementing our current regulations. Thank you. Currently, the code allows 16 billboards, and they're allowed only in the northern area of the city adjacent to I-70. That allowance actually dates back to 1991, as do most of our billboard regulations. There's a brief history in your packet. In 2007, the code was revised to refine the definition of a billboard to include the phrase oriented to the interstate highway. And that term has definitely helped. We've had a few interpretations over the years of billboards that were not eligible because we deemed them to be not predominantly oriented to the interstate highway, but it is still open to interpretation, and that subjectivity is actually what led to an appeal last year. In that case, we determined that the proposed location, a couple of blocks away from the interstate, was ineligible because, in staff's opinion, it was not oriented to the interstate highway. I think it's fair to say that the applicant, the staff, and the district judge all agree that that term is ambiguous, and so our first request is to create some clarity in the code by changing the code to require that a billboard be within 250 feet of the highway. We get a dimension, it sort of becomes black and white, everybody's on the same page. 250 feet is a dimension that all of our existing billboards would comply with, and we think that distance is appropriate, given our land use pattern along the frontage road and near I-76 and I-70. The second specific provision that we're recommending is actually to reduce that billboard cap from 16 to 15, and the code, the code establishes a lottery process to fill a billboard vacancy. We created two vacancies in 2015 when we determined two billboards to not be predominantly oriented to the state highway or interstate highway, and we've actually been trying to fill that final vacancy for years now. We have done numerous lotteries, applicants have been chosen, they have tried to go through the process, and they've had to withdraw. Ultimately, there are sort of layers of regulations that apply to billboards. We have our local regulations, and then it's state and federal regulations that apply to billboards across the whole country, and it's that layered effect and combined impact that makes it nearly impossible to cite a 16th billboard in Wheat Ridge that is predominantly oriented to the state highway. So, in order to save, I think, everybody manage expectations with applicants, and with our, the time of our staff, we're recommending we reduce it to 15. Included in your packet is also a red line of the ordinance with a few proposed clarifications. There is one provision that we thought of after the fact, naturally. Every so often, we get an inquiry as to whether a billboard can be a digital billboard, so a giant digital screen. You'll notice that we don't have any of those in Wheat Ridge, and that's because we have consistently interpreted the code to say that they're not allowed. We do have rules for changeable copy signs, but those live under our freestanding and wall signs, so we would like to add a phrase, or sentence, rather, in the billboard regulations to just once and for all say, changeable copy billboard is not permitted. That is all of the provisions that I had to present tonight. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the red line detachment. I have three quick things. Under A1, A1 general provisions, it says for the purpose of the subsection, the city is divided into two billboard districts, B1 and B2. However, we go on to say on the next page that B1, B2 distinction is no longer relevant, and the regulations above and below apply to all billboards, and so I think that was just, that's a spot where we probably just need to take that B1, B2 reference out of there. And then, if you go to B2, so the new B2, B2. Okay, so B2, whenever an abandonment or other event results in fewer than the maximum permitted numbers, blah, 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 goes on to say all this. It has a sentence that says, "The determination and declaration of a vacancy shall be in the city's sole and absolute discretion." However, the rest of the, the rest of, of all of the language in here says, "Community Development Director." So, I just wonder who the vacancy shall be in the city's sole and absolute direction, like who in the city is that, and should we maybe clarify that that's the Community Development Director?
Yeah, that's a good catch. We usually do try to identify an individual person.
And then, my one last thing while we're at it, which Mayor Starker can confirm, those are the five most expensive words in construction. Can we please change the his/her language to be more inclusive, whether remove it or they, it for us? Yes. Other than that, I agree with all of the redlined, I, I think you guys did a really good job clarifying a lot of stuff, and also some of this stuff got simplified. And so, with your request of adding a line about no digital signage, I think this is a well-put-together regulation.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. So, there's, I saw something about CDOT and the 660 feet regulation. So, my, my question is that, right, and, and just, I guess I want to get some, the mixed-use commercial interstate says that that zoning applies if you're within 500 feet of an interstate. This is about interstate billboards, and we're saying 250 feet. Why, why is one 500, and I'm not against necessarily the 250, but I'm just curious, like, where did the 500 come for, like, mixed-use interstate? I just don't know, is there any nexus between the two if we're both saying they're interstate, but one can be 500, one's 250?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, so the 600 feet, just for clarification, is, CDOT has jurisdiction over any billboard within 600 feet. So, when you're in a more rural area and there's sort of a longer view shed, is that a word, you can see further without obstructions in between, billboards might be farther away from the highway. For the purpose of the zone district, I don't recall exactly why we landed on 500, but the, the goal there was to, to promote land uses that would serve highway users who we know have to get off the highway and drive some distance to get to sort of developable parcels. And then, for the purpose, the 500 feet is maybe a block-ish, half a block-ish. For the purpose of the billboards, what we did is look at sort of the first parcel adjacent to either the frontage road or the highway. In the case of the billboard applicant last year, if I'm remembering correctly, they were maybe two or three blocks north of the highway, so they're short blocks in that area on Kipling, but it just felt like it was too far away to be considered oriented to the highway first. So, for this specific dimension, the 250, it's a good point. We didn't look at sort of how do we define highway orientation in other aspects. We looked specifically at what makes a billboard visible and oriented to its primary audience, which are the passersby on the highway versus the users getting off the highway in the case of the mixed-use code.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thanks for cleaning this up. I think it's really good. View shed is a word.
Thank you.
I had a question. Is, do you, the land that the billboard sits on, is there a particular zoning that's applied to that, to that parcel?
It's a good question. So, NIA and our, we are, we are not as restrictive as CDOT, and the reason why a lot of billboards are not ending up sited in Wheat Ridge that we've processed lately is because CDOT has a rule that the land that is proposed to have the billboard must have been zoned commercially in 1970, I think it was, which is, of course, the year that we adopted our first zoning map, which makes it a little tricky. So, there is a, it's related to the Federal Highway Beautification Act. I, I think it does have to be a commercial or industrial zone in our regulations, but CDOT has been more restrictive. Most of ours are actually on agricultural properties, a few on ag. I don't think it can be residential, but I'm not looking at the, quizzing me. I'm not looking at the code right this minute.
And, and by limiting the number to, to 15 or 16, that, that caps the number so that someone that's adjacent to the highway couldn't say, "Well, I'd like to have a billboard."
Right.
Unless, unless they can buy out or otherwise one goes out of operation, and then there would be a
Right.
an opening there if you otherwise were approved for
Yes. When, we didn't provide you with the full compendium of the history of billboards in Weardge. We did that for the Board of Adjustment last year for the purpose of the appeal. Our billboard locations actually have not changed since the 1991 ordinance. We, at the time, discussed amortizing all billboards, and at the time said, "No, the 16 that are here can stay." So, the locations have been the exact same. The reason we have two vacancies is because two billboards that were notably further away were deemed to be non-conforming signs. We said, "You don't actually, you're not oriented to the highway anymore." So, we created these two vacancies ourselves through legislation, and that has been the trouble ever since.
Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. I appreciate the cleanup. I, I would love to consider that should a billboard be vacated and removed, that we reduce the number of allowable. I mean, I, I really would hate to see new billboards go up in our city because they, I think, detract from people noticing our city. I mean, they're, I can see I-70 from my backyard, basically, and billboards just aren't beautiful. And I, if, you know, they generally are advertising businesses not in our city. So, I would be curious, I mean, is that something we could do, add to this ordinance that should, should a billboard be removed, that we, that, that the number goes down? And remove the, the new billboard thing? Because I just, I don't know, I just, less billboards is better to me. I mean, it's not revenue that really benefits our city.
That's certainly policy direction that can be created into code, right, Mr. Dole?
Yeah, that's true. You, you can do that. The, the limitation, there's a state statute that was enacted, I don't know, it's probably 20 years ago now, but that prohibits amortization of non-conforming uses. What you're suggesting, though, is when a, when a, it's not really a non-conforming use, it's a conforming use, no longer being made of that property, so that's a property right that that property owner's decided not to assert. We could structure the ordinance to, to say that that number is, is reduced automatically when, as an if, a billboard operator ceases to use that, that land. That would mean that we probably wouldn't need a, I want to think a little bit about whether we'd even need a replacement lottery application process with that in mind, because it would continue to just, the number would keep going down, and you wouldn't be creating any vacancies. So, we need to do a fair amount of restructuring of the ordinance because right now, it's kind of oriented around the vacant, the occurrence of a vacancy and now what, and, you know, half of what's here, that's really been half of the litigation we've undertaken or undergone by, by billboard companies since the ordinance has been in place. But, that would be a, a major policy change from the decisions made some time ago, okay, these 16 are okay, are now 15, that should bear discussion really from the whole council. I think legally, you can do it. It will mean a very different ordinance, I think.
Okay. What if we just didn't allow new ones? I mean, because, because, so the ordinance, as it's written, allows, it addresses vacancies, and then vacations, and then billboards can be moved, and it sounds like there's not going to be a time, anytime too soon, where there isn't a need or demand for a billboard. But, I mean, if, if we vacate or take one down and then someone builds another ones somewhere else, I realize that this is kind of restrictive. I just, I just, my interest would be, if we lose a billboard, that's one less billboard in the city. And so, I understand that there's some reworking of it, but I'd be curious to hear from my peers if they would support reducing the number of billboards if the word number, if, if one of them gets removed voluntarily by the operator.
Counselor Hoppe?
I have two follow-up questions. Do, do, does the city receive any revenue from the billboards?
No. The landowner exclusively receives revenue.
Okay. And then, and then, Mr. Dole, so you were saying we could say, like, if a billboard is, is removed, that it will not be replaced. Is there a threshold, is there a minimum threshold of, with the, with the amount of, of lineage of I-70 in our, in our community, is there a threshold of how many billboards we have to allow within our community?
No, not really. This, the billboard industry is not a protected class, you know, in any particular way. It's like any other use, junkyards, you know, the various kinds of uses. Cities, over time, have zoned out of their communities because they're not a protected class or use in any particular way. So, no, just because there's always been 16 in the last three years, 15, does not mean that we have to kind of provide that, that service at that level.
And, and so, in this ordinance, could we say, could we say something that is like, we're, we have a maximum of 15 billboards, but then can we say something in there, like, kind of what Councilwoman Holtein was saying, like, if one is vacated, it will not be replaced, and we can add that into this ordinance like that?
Yeah, to be a matter, I'd have to think about sort of how you articulate it, sort of the wordsmithing of it, but the, you'd establish a maximum at whatever the number is now, and then say, rather carefully write language around when a billboard is, is, is removed at the behest of the property owner or the billboard owner, and is, and, and there is not a application by that billboard owner to, I think you want to make provision for replacement. You know, billboard gets old and the same company, United Advertising, wants to put a better one up, that you have to allow that, but to the, make it very clear that if, if the decision of the property owner slash billboard owner is not to maintain a billboard in that location, that the total number of allowed billboards in the city then becomes one less, and, and, and so on.
We could say something like, no new applications will be accepted for new billboard locations, or something like that, maybe?
Yeah, I think you could do that.
Okay. I see. Counsel, Counselor Ohm?
Yes.
Counselor Ohm.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, would it be, do we have, what kind of fees do we charge? And I think the bigger question is, is can we charge a annual fee?
The only fee associated with the billboard is the building permit fee, which is based on the valuation, which is, I can look up an example.
What I'm thinking is if we could, if we could charge some type of annual license.
We don't, but there could be something out there that some city has tried.
And then, and then if we could
We could be the first.
And then, if we could, well, and then if we could earmark those funds towards affordable housing.
I think you have to have a nexus.
Yeah, I have, I'd have to look at that carefully. If it's an occupation tax, that's a tax, that's a new tax, that's a table election, right? So, I wouldn't advise a table election for the purpose of taxing 15 billboards in the city.
Yeah.
Might well pass, but that's a lot of effort.
And billboard companies are very, what's the right word?
That would be a contested, that would be
Organized.
contested election. Yeah, they are very
Yeah, they're very organized.
Billboard locations are really revenue-producing. They're, they're really, they, they turn over a lot of revenue for the, as against the investment necessary to put up a billboard. The revenue annually is just, is colossal, and that is why. They appeal any denials, all the way we've got this latest that was denied is now on appeal to the Court of Appeals. I'm very confident that we're good on, on this one, got a good district court opinion. But, the point is, that even though I think they think that their chances are one out of 10, that they'll get a reverse, it's worth it to them because of the value. So, we would need to step pretty carefully in terms of making sure that, that I believe, as, if you wanted to go that direction, that the system were not one that denied a revenue stream that's existing, that they're depending upon, because they'll hang in on that. But, if they voluntarily decide, you know, "We just don't want that revenue stream anymore. We want to put up a better billboard, you know, in Lakewood or in, in Brush, Colorado," then, then fine. But, I'd, I'd want to be careful about the language for that reason.
Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna try for consensus. I'd like to ask for consensus to move forward with the proposed amendments to the billboard regulations with the addition of a line that says, "No digital billboards," and with the additional wordsmithing and language ad around, "If vacated, no new applications will be accepted, and the total number will be diminished."
Show of hands on that. Looks like we have consensus on that.
Thank you.
Does that give you the clarity that you need to go forward?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That will take care of agenda item number one on our special study session. I guess we will go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Nothing else this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from, from elected officials? Okay. Seeing none, we are about at the end of our session here. I think next week, we have a study session here at 6:30.
We do.
So, if you will all have a good week, be careful, drive safely around our, our city. We will hope to see you again soon. So, we are adjourned.